The order, please stand for the pledge allegiance. Before we approve the agenda, it's time for annual organizational meeting, election of officers. First up is calls for nomination for president.
I would nominate Jason Reiner as a president or president.
Second.
It's been moved in second and any other nominations? It's been moved to second to nominate me again as president. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Oh, sorry, roll call vote. Michelle?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Lisa? And I guess I'll vote aye too. Alright. Next up is assumption office by, uh, by new president and we'll call for nominations for vice president.
I'd like to nominate Elise Riley for vice president.
I will second that. It's been moved in second to nominate Lisa Riley for vice president. It's a roll call vote. Michelle?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
And I too will vote aye. Motion carries. Next up is a nomination for thrive representative. I will nominate Frank from home to continue his, his status as thrive representative.
Second.
It's been moved and signed in to nominate Frank from home as the thrive representative. Roll call vote. Michelle?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
And I too will vote aye. So Frank is continuing our thrive representative. Next up is nomination for our WASDA rep.
Nominate Michelle O'Brien.
Second.
It has been moved and signed in to nominate Michelle O'Brien as our WASDA rep. It's a roll call vote. Michelle?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
And I too will vote aye. Motion carries. And that concludes that. We will resume our regular board meeting. First up is approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Then moved in second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Alright, do we have anybody signed up? Anybody online Blake? Okay, we will skip that portion and move right on to student representative reports. I'll go start with you Kami.
Alright. Boys basketball are away Quincy on Friday and then home on Saturday along with the girls team. Boys swim travel to Wenatchee on Saturday and boys and girls wrestling are home tonight.
Thank you. Alexander?
After coming back from the WASDA conference, I learned of a, uh, group WSFE, I don't know, something like that. And I had brought the information that I had learnt about that group to, uh, Darlene so that we may, in the future may think about it. May think about working with them or something like that.
Great. I do have a couple of questions for unless we're getting to it later, but I'd like to just to real quick and, what did you think of the conference and what did you get out of it? Kami?
I really liked the conference at first. When I first heard about it, I was kind of worried because I thought it was just be sitting there, which it kind of was, but it was really interesting. I learned a lot more about what I can do in my role since it's kind of a smaller part in the school board, but it's still important. And I just learned a lot about leadership. Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Danny?
Yeah, I found the experience quite enjoyable. I really liked attending all the different little conference talks that there was. And I really wish that I could have attended every single one of them, but time moves forward.
Well, great. We appreciate you going and spending that time and glad you got something out of it. So appreciate it. Any other questions for Kami or Alexander?
Yeah, was there a session you attended that was particularly interesting to you or something that you maybe like wanted to take away and implement here?
My first one I went to was called like bites and snacks. I think it's just about leadership in the school with more student wise and I took a lot away from that.
Can't think of one exactly right now. I'll have to check my notes.
Fair enough. Any other questions? Thank you. Uh, next up is building reports. Mr. Danny, you're up first. How's the middle school?
Alright, which way is it? Green Good?
Yep.
Green Good. Alright. Um, so I've got about five or six things here. I just wanted to share with you real quick. Um, so we had the end of the trimester. You guys probably have already heard that. Um, main changes that we have are electives and, um, health PE. Um, our seventh and eighth graders rotate out of PE into health for a trimester and then back into PE. So that took place. STEM, robotics, um, family consumer sciences, um, art, all those are, are other trimester classes that rotate. Uh, an example of one of the things that they are doing in some of the classes, we just had food, food truck wars and cake wars in the family consumer science class. It's their culminating project. Um, and so we've got some pictures of that. We'll be adding to the page in the next day or so. But that's, they're starting now as in the other day, um, observing class and they were, um, taking their food handlers card. So they start with food safety, food handlers card, and then they progress to inviting staff and others to come in and judge, um, these, um, in some case concoctions that they've come up themselves. Other cases are following, um, these very elaborate recipes. And so always fun to go in and see the, the artistic expression through the, um, cupcakes and the cake wars and then the, the food that they have is, um, pretty awesome stuff. So fun, fun time there. Um, to see the hard work kind of pay off at the end of the trimester. Uh, winter one sports are well underway. We, uh, we're playing, um, basketball tonight hosting Grandview, uh, for the seventh and eighth grade boys basketball. Just some quick numbers, uh, boys basketball had 78 students try out for, uh, 55 spots. Uh, in the end, we had 41 Howza Middle School, eight Patterson and six home school students made the team, um, which unfortunately 17 HMS and four Patterson students were cut and unable to participate. Uh, the eighth grade and seventh grade AB squads had 10 games, five away, five home. C team or the combo team had six games, two away, four home. At the same time in, uh, winter one is girls wrestling, 13 members on the team, no cuts there. Um, they have six matches and four away and two are at home. And those are, um, same with boys in, in, uh, winter two, um, you might get three or four schools in one gym. Um, 30 to 40, 50, 60 kids. Um, so usually wrestling takes about two, three hours. Just one match after another. So those are pretty fun to go watch. A lot of good competition there. We've got some great wrestlers out this year. And then dance team had 12 members. Uh, they perform at halftime of the basketball games at home, uh, like they did tonight. And then they had a, uh, district competition. Um, our team won two awards this year. Sharp synchronization, which I thought was awesome. Um, because they are very sharp. They're very talented and they, um, won the overall outstanding, uh, team award. So, um, they're, they're well coached. And basketball, like my kids have played basketball, they start when they're in first grade kindergarten, whatever. Um, these dance, dance team members don't have a lot of previous, there might be a few that have some classical, but for the most part, these are kids just wanted to go out and have fun and they start, um, mid-October and they are doing some amazing stuff within a month, not even a month. They're, they're competing and performing. So some good stuff there. Um, our performing arts choir and first year band have already had their, um, their productions and, and I've said it for years. It's the best entertainment you get that doesn't cost you anything. So, um, I hope more and more people start to go to those. Um, but the next one that's coming up is the um, intermediate and advanced, uh, band is going to be tomorrow night, um, at the high school. And so, um, the middle school showcase their intermediate and advanced classes. Um, so that'll be a great time to go, go see some, um, some hard work that they put in, uh, and that'll be their fall productions. Then we'll do another one in the spring. Uh, the secure vestibule, um, is up. It is, um, windows are in, uh, for the secure entryway. Um, doors are in, um, we walked through today. Um, they're working on finishing up the drywall. Texture was going on later tonight or tomorrow will hopefully be painted by the end of the day. We still have to do the floor and then the electrical wiring for the ADA accessibility and the card readers and that kind of stuff, but, um, it's a whole different look. And, uh, it's bringing a lot of pride. People are excited about it and can't wait to see it completed. We should have it back open and functioning Friday. So, um, there'll be some work that will still need to be done, but, um, we'll have our vestibule up and, and running for people to, to go through. We, it's been locked off all this week. So, um, that'll be good. Gear Up Grant, um, we were awarded a Gear Up Grant this year. Um, and that is for our current sixth and seventh grade classes and it will follow them through their first year of college. Um, so it'll follow them through the middle school and then high school. And I just received an outreach and I think you did as well, uh, Super Net Casey, that they want to, um, have a supply for this year's fifth grade. So next year we would have sixth, seventh and eighth. And so it allows us to extend that out more than just the, the two years. So I've got some stuff to do in the next week to give them some information so that we can be considered for that. But that is always a, a nice support supplement for our kids. Um, and my daughter is a freshman in college now and they follow them all the way up through that point to give them a nice handoff, um, as they leave, leave high school and start, um, college as well. And then last real quick, because I know time's running out, um, we, we are looking at our end of trimester, um, data. Um, the three big ones we're pulling, um, as a staff, we've looked at our grades for trimester one. We have a meeting tomorrow as part of our building MTSS that we're developing where we're going to look at behavior, discipline, um, attendance and grades. And so I just want to give you a little bit of feedback on our grades. Um, and these are quite, quite different, starkly different from, um, when we were in COVID. So it's a nice change, but, um, 90% of all grades were passing grades. Um, there were only 10% of grades that were in the failing range. 75% of our students had all passing grades, no failing grades anywhere along the line. Um, 9% of our students had As in five of their six classes and, um, almost 13% had As in all six of their classes. Um, more work to be done. Um, this is the stuff that we're taking down to the class level, the student to student level in our PLC work that we meet, um, once, twice a week with each of our teachers to diagnose, um, what's going on in class? What do we need to do? Um, the conversation the other day was, alright, what do you expect from the students that are coming into this next unit? What, knowing what you know about them? Um, for those that we know that they've got some struggles, what are some things we can do to, um, to address those before we actually get in there? And we're seeing some, um, fruits from our labor. So, um, this is just kind of a, a snapshot in here. The question then and some of our staff have had it like, okay, if we're getting that many, you know, good grades, why are, why are our, um, state scores lower? And we've really been diving into that. The difference between, uh, written assessment in front of you, um, and the, for some reason, the ownership that that brings to it versus getting onto a computer. Um, we've done AB with, um, my ready and some other tests and we're seeing a stark difference between. So where that's part of our PLC work is to break that down and, um, really try to improve our grades, but also showcase the good work that is happening, but it doesn't always show up through one assessment that they take for one day in the spring. So, um, some of the things that are happening at, at the middle school.
Questions? Any questions for Michael?
Yeah, I was wondering if you could tell us a little more about that gear up grant and what exactly that does for the students that it's for?
So there, it takes a lot of different shapes. Indiana can talk about that because Indiana was a principal before me and had, um, a grant as well. It's gearing up for college readiness is, is the primary component of it. And they begin to, um, really shine a focus on what opportunities are available, what it would take to go to college. Um, and then they actually kind of finish out the year, culminate the year with, um, college visitation. So part of the work is they may work with us on doing some research about what college you might want to go to, what, what career you might want to have. Um, to go to that college, what do you need to have for that? What classes do you need to take? Um, what are the financial requirements? How do we get you financially? So that's kind of at sixth grade, it's just getting them awareness about, um, college readiness. And then I'll speak to Allison just graduated last spring and, um, luckily we were very fortunate that she did, um, well with financial aid and scholarships. And part of that was the gear up person that was at the high school was emailing out, hey, here's scholarships, here's stuff you can do. Stop by if you need help with that. So it kind of takes them from the beginning of having conversations or not the beginning because they, they have them in elementary. So I don't want to take away the work that's there. But it's like kind of a coordinated effort. And also it looks at the barriers that might get in the way of a student being successful in, in school. And so they might have some after school support. They might go in and do some tutoring within the classes. They might bring people in. Um, there are some funds and I don't know what the amount of the scholarship award or not scholarship, but the grant award is. But, um, years and years ago, we bought some really expensive calculators for the algebra class. Um, they bought Apple TV pucks. Um, so it might be a mix of technology to support in the classroom. It might be a mix of staffing and tutoring that they provide to students. It might be an after school program. It might be taking them all to central or WSU. There's a myriad of things and we get to sit down at the beginning of the year and say, here's kind of where our needs are at. Um, here's what you guys can offer. Let's, let's create a plan. So, um, and then, and as part of, for those guys, it will be part of a, what a seven year plan, eight year plan, including the high school. So there's stuff that they'll plan to do in, in high school. Um, there's stuff that they'll have, um, ready and available for our kids at the middle school, but, um, there's a barbecue. I, I had to decline tomorrow or on Friday that they were going to, um, they're going through some of that. So the, the grant person and I are going to work together to get me caught back up. Um, but, um, they'll be starting here pretty soon. The, the position for the, um, building coordinator has already been out and so they're hiring that right now. So this, in this case, they're building from the ground up. Um, and, and then hopefully in a few years, it'll just be, we're adding on to it, adding on to it. So.
Any other question? Alright. Thank you, Michael. Appreciate it. Alright, next up is Prosser High School. Mr. Bailey?
Buddy? Uh, just to add on to what Michael said, so we, we do currently have our sophomore cohort with gear up.
Brian, would you slide a little closer?
Okay. Uh, sophomore cohort is with gear up and one of the great things about that gear up grant is that and working with them, if you have something, um, some item that you want to purchase and they, for that cohort, um, they'll provide you with that and then you get to keep that to use in your instruction through forever. Um, so even though the cohort might move, you know, they become juniors. I no longer teach juniors as long as I taught them as sophomores, I get to keep that equipment if it's microscopes, calculators, that kind of stuff. Gear up paid for our teachers to go to the, um, National Science um, in Louisiana just recently. So that was the help as well. Um, they do a lot of really good stuff. So. Uh, anyway, um, our students already told you guys about winter sports. We're off and running. Everything is going well. Uh, I just wanted to point out that, uh, boys and girls wrestling are now together. This is really cool. We haven't had this before. Uh, in the past, it has always been sending these two teams separate all over the country, uh, trying to find wrestling matches. They are now wrestling together. So they wrestle JV to start the day followed by boys and girls. Um, that, actually they do JV both, uh, boys and girls at the same time, followed by girls on one mat and boys on another mat. Um, of varsity wrestling. So if you ever want to.
Perfect timing. Jackson just text Yoshimi pinned her person in her first match.
Nice.
So your board member, board rep just pinned her girl.
Good for, and, uh, yeah. So if you ever want to go to a match, uh, now is a good time to go. Uh, it's a great time to take in events at, at all levels. We need drama just to continue on the activities route. Drama is holding auditions for, uh, 12th night. Um, Shakespeare play. I'm excited about it. It's actually my favorite Shakespearean drama. Um, so yes, look forward to that. Um, clubs and activities have been working hard. We're trying to add or even look at adding another club. Mariachi. Um, there has been some interest and when you do with ASB clubs, it's all student led. Uh, so the students are the ones who brought this and, uh, we're trying to gather numbers and see what the interest is for this, if we even, uh, can make it a reality. Uh, we're trying to improve and build upon our numbers last year for unified, our unified club. Uh, they're looking at holding their cornhole tournament again. Um, and this one is going to be during the day to try and recruit more kids, um, maybe during lunch. Uh, that one is coming up. I can't remember the exact date, but they just met yesterday to try and hammer out the details. Uh, this coming week is Mary Mustang week, um, accompanied by dress up days all week and an assembly to finish the week. And, uh, that should be pretty exciting for kids. They always look for opportunities to dress up and surprised you didn't talk about it. But, uh, you know, the dress up days more than I do. Um, a couple of things we're working on our counseling PLC just met today and worked, um, uh, actually they, they were part of a training, uh, looking at an overview for a wellness screener uh, to bring to not only the high school, but the district, um, in our district counseling PLC. Uh, that would help provide us with alerts for students that are struggling or might be, uh, in need of counseling at any moment. Um, and so, you know, we're looking for a screener for that, that we could potentially go district wide. I know that the high school counselors and the middle school counselors all attended that meeting. Um, and we are beginning the scheduling process already for next year. So, um, excited about that to try and and, uh, clean that up and do a little better job this year than we did last year and be ready to go buddy and beer. Any questions for me?
Questions, Brian? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Lorenz, migrant department. Is the microphone on?
It's green.
It's green?
How's that?
There you go.
Sorry, I had to push the button. So we started off with a launch of a software program called elevation that does a lot of tracking for our bilingual department. However, one of the benefits of using this is they also allowed us to bring all students into the software program. So it tracks all, all of our students throughout the district K-12. So it's a great tool that also has professional development. Another strategy is available for teachers to use on demand in order to help their students in multilingual situations. We have been pretty busy. Um, our planetarium has been gaining a lot of popular, uh, demand. Last year we went to Grandview Middle School and supported all of their science classes. This year we were invited to Rock Island Elementary, kind of over by Wenatchee and our high school students. Did presentations for that entire school. It was pretty cool. I'm really proud of our students because they're starting to take over in regards to setup, tear down, actual presentations, running. So they're, they're practicing their oracy. And then yesterday we had a workshop that was working more on their writing. That was another area of our concern and trying to address is writing. So they're currently working on writing scripts. What does that look like? How does that look? In addition to expanding their skills within the planetarium. So it's pretty exciting. Lupi Maldonado, my migrant graduation specialist. I can't say enough about her. She's absolutely. Not only does she help me with the planetarium components, but she also leads our next generation club at the high school, which has been doing a lot of leadership things as well. In addition to that, she also helps with thrive and she's a big part of thrive. And so this Friday, she'll be taking some students to a leadership training and trip while we are here, uh, conducting, conducting our PAC meeting for the December. So you guys are all invited. Come down and ask. We've also been working, um, I just had a great conversation with, uh, Michael and his team over at Howza Middle School in regards to providing some support in groups for students to kind of alleviate some of the, um, support that they need. They, they needed additional supports and so we're helping them out. In addition, Michael was supportive in letting 17 of his students, uh, join me at an event called La Chispa, which is, means the spark and it's sparking student leadership. And so he's been really supportive in that work as well. And so we're looking forward to what that blossoms into over, after the break and into the springtime and hopefully we can see a lot of student engagement that focuses on academic projects as well as building culture within the building amongst the students. Um, also have had the opportunity to work with the high school and Mr. Bailey and creating some learner plans that are tied to his school improvement plan. So, um, he needs and we're going to be working to create that support. And then another thing I'm excited about too is Laurel Arstad, the coach at Witstrand. She's been doing a dynamic job in regards to thinking maps, which is a, a professional development we have provided throughout the district for teachers to work with multilingual learners. Uh, she's gotten her team to the point where they are now taking on, uh, some train the trainer roles and around the writing components of that. So, which helps to support and the work within ARC, which is the curriculum for the district. And so I'm really excited about seeing those things and what she's done with that. I can't tell you enough how much I appreciate her leadership and her work with, with teachers as well on that. So. Um, it's kind of where we're at right now. We'll continue to roll up our sleeves and get to it. But, uh, you guys have any questions about anything specifically or I, I hope to see you on Friday. If you can make it, we, we start at five and on the menu is the money.
Questions for Eric? I have one.
Yeah.
Um, are you going to set up the planetarium at one of the PAC meetings again like you did last year?
Uh, we probably will, but we're gonna, um, do it in conjunction with the resource fair in February.
Okay.
Um, February is our big resource fair and we always have a lot of community members and, and all that. So that'll be available in the north gym while everything else is going on in the south gym.
That's a pretty cool thing. So.
Yeah, it's been doing a lot, a lot of great work and, um, like I said, the, the kids are really driving that. And then, uh, hopefully we'll start to see some bridging of stuff. Oh. Also, we just finished a PAC officer retreat at ESD 123. Uh, some colleagues over there and I got together. We created a plan for helping PAC officers throughout our region understand kind of their role and how they can help support their students and the boards within their systems. Creating comprehensive understanding and making sure kids' needs are being met. And that was pretty exciting. And then, uh, we worked with, uh, Dr. Jose Rivera from Grandview. He came and he was a participant in that as well. So we're bridging all across just our region, but next door too. So we're always, um, collaboratively working.
Great.
Yeah. Anything else? Alright, well you guys have a fantastic evening.
You do the same. Thanks, Eric.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to review of policy 4237 advertising and promotions.
So this, I'm leaning forward now, but, um, this comes from the discussions that we've had, right? About, not only reviewing our policies and procedures, but this is where the discussion has come up about wineries and distilleries and stories of both marijuana and alcohol dispensaries, I guess marijuana is called, but, um, you know, a large part of our community works in the, some of those industries in some way or another. And so I was tasked with coming up with some different language. And so this is a discussion and there's no action on this this evening. Uh, we've had a few in your packet, you know, if you're looking online, you'll notice that we had four options. Um, oh, I'm sorry. Right. I'm sorry. 4237. Sorry. Um, 4237 is advertising and promotion. So that would be like if winery X wanted to participate in a football fundraiser and they put their sign on, we've, our policy did not allow it to say blank, blank winery on the sign. And this, that's where this comes into play. Um, we've just were asking for some support or guidance or understanding on what would you like to see? Just because we're supporting our people who work in our community and so forth, right? Is that sending a message that you wish to send to wineries or not? And so that's why it's brought up. And so I'm open for any questions or discussion, but that's, that's where that. And so I'm open for any questions or discussion, but that's, that's where that.
Not even sure where to start. I think as far as the policies, this policy is concerned, forty-two thirty-seven. And I guess Mike, I guess a couple of questions. When you, when we say advertising. Almost think it gets kind of convoluted with the the other policy. Um. Six-one-one-four. A little bit. I mean, I, I think they're two separate. But one of the same when I, when I think of advertising, I think of like the banners that we see at the uh. You know, in the gym, um, at the high school or the banners we see at the football field or baseball or softball. I mean, that's the kind of advertising that that I see, but it does not. It seems like that fits more in the next policy than than this one. Does that make sense? The way it's, the way it's read, the way it reads, it doesn't, it's not. Usually when we put a banner out, it's because a donation is given to put that banner out. So I think the way this reads, I'm fine with the language. I think a lot of the language for discussion for the next policy.
I think the only thing that I want to make sure that we understand is sometimes we do fundraising and I wonder if that's different than gifts or donations. Of the word advertising.
Maybe.
And I, and I'm not saying it is or it isn't. I just want to make sure that we're discussing these together. Like you said, they're kind of one in the same, but is advertising more of a fundraiser? So. Oh. Oh. Oh, no, it's not just you. So I, I'm gonna go back to my microphone, my microphone. Um, so I just want to make sure like if you look under. The objectives of the contest campaign or promotion will be consistent with the district's goals and policies. So I see what you're saying when it's about ad- advertising. I just want to make sure that if we say it's okay in the other policy. That we're addressing it in this policy. As it says. And maybe there, maybe the heading's just wrong. I don't know where advertising comes into this one, into. Forty-two thirty-seven. Or maybe is it talking about FFA? So like advertising campaign. I, 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 when I hear the word advertising, I think about. Maybe they're saying like their FFA sign can't have an alcohol bottle on it. Is that what they're saying?
So currently. No alcohol, no winery, you know. That, that's correct, right?
But I think what Jason's saying is this is talked about contests, advertising and promotion. So like. You know how we have this uh, a science or we have the history. Let's say. Um, the history day and they do a, they do a presentation. Would the history of prohibition be something? Right? Because I think that's what's saying. Any club, associate or other organization must have prior approval for students. Participation in any contest, advertising campaign or promotion. Is that what it's talking about?
Yeah, to me it would be like a. I think the people, like the booster club would probably be the easiest one for me to grab, put my hands around on this policy, specific policy. Um, you know, where they were going to promote or advertise. Oh, what is it? The red and white name? Is that what it's right? So if they were to, if they were to advertise for.
Campaign.
Yeah. So if they wanted to do this big campaign to promote it within the school. Then they can't, I mean, they can't use, you know, kids if it's going to interfere with their extra, you know, their curricular. Or co-curricular activities, et cetera, et cetera. That's how I read it.
I read it that way too, like it. Uh. The district showing fundraising support. But an outside organization wanting to use our students in their campaign. Is that what you think?
Yes, that's kind of what I'm. Kind of what I'm getting at. So I.
I'm gonna own, that's not what I read at all. So now that you've said that, it makes sense, but that's not what I read when I read it.
So maybe in another example could be like mu- music boosters, it's going to have a fundraising dinner and it's going to be at a winery. That, that would be an example. They'd have to get approval from superintendent to go ahead and do that. Right, that's the same. Not that it's gonna happen, but yeah, they're gonna get fresh. I think the final draft to me would. Read and lays out the rules pretty clearly, as well, clearly as we have all the decision that we understand. Um, and gives, you know. An outline of what's allowed, the superintendent will allow, and also you know that out, free of objectionable promotion of any part of a special interest. I think it covers. What you'd be there and what. When permission's given.
So I think to, for, so for, to me, the, the final version, I think is ready to go. First reading. As, as presented.
And for anybody who's listening, the reason that we bring these up in discussion items is so we can have this conversation freely. Without breaking any Roberts rules of order or any letting anybody know that there's any preconceived ideas of what should or should not be. In them. So we can really talk about them freely.
Okay, uh, I think we got consensus on that. Uh, moving on to um, item five. Review, review of policy and procedures six-one-one-four, gifts or donations.
Okay, now I'll start back over where I went before. I had him backwards. Um, so if you can see in this one. Um, we took six-one-one-four and then just like we were just talking about, this one gets more into. Wineries, distilleries. Um, and so it, when we sat down to try and bring to you some different ideas. It was difficult to write. Because you either felt like you were leaving. One of our employers or producers out. Or it felt one-sided or whatever. And so then I have to give a lot of this to Selena. A lot of this work to Selena. So we worked on adding Benton and Yakima Counties. So that then we were supporting our local rather than anyone, right? Um, and so then we took it one step further. We received a couple um, questions about this and it's not in your packet because it was past the time. We talked about um. Like sponsorship for banners or things like that. And so that is some language that we also have. So example, this, and it's not in front of you. The district allows businesses and organizations including. And then we would have the proper language from either option one, two, three or four. To sponsor school teams. In return, sponsors may display banners at designated areas, fields and/or gyms to promote their businesses during school-related events. And activities. Sponsorships are subject to approval by the athletic director. The pricing for the sponsorship banners are as follows. And we just put some numbers in there. Or maybe we leave them at the discretion of the club or team. So. And then payment requirements, right? But what we're saying is if you are winery X and you want to support. Girls wrestling. And you want to put up your banner, then this has already been decided. We aren't saying, well, I don't know if you can do that. And then is that? What you want done in, are we supporting our community here? Or would we rather not have? Those types of businesses in a gym?
You know, for me, I think that language, I think makes a lot of sense, especially for our. Um, because we are so heavy into agriculture and wineries and stuff like that. Um, I, I think it's. Um, I think it's appropriate um, that, that we, that they still have the same chance to, to donate to our programs as, as anybody else. So. I have no problem with that language. I would probably leave the dollar sign up the, the particular club that's selling it.
Do any of you have any thoughts on? Option one is that's in the red, option two that's in the blue, option three which reads alcohol distilleries? Do we need to put them all in there? Or could we do option four when it says alcohol producers and distributors? And, and do you have any thoughts on that? They're very much the same. We just tried to use different language.
I think option one covers everything. And it's less gritty, it's less in the weeds and it's broader. And then we're not trying to figure out, whoever's in charge of figuring out, you know, we go to option four. Do we need to distinguish breweries, side reasons, alcohol distributors? We're not the one for it. I think thinking with option one covers everything.
I would agree with that. I think.
Students, can you, can you see that, those options, right? Do you have them open? So, I would just like, I was wondering maybe what their thoughts were. What would your thought be if you walked into? A gym and you saw. Smith Estates or Smith Wineries or ABC Winery. Do you think? That has any, is that any concerning to you?
Um. Hmm, maybe since around the school, we also now have uh. A thing saying uh, nine out of ten Prosser School District students don't drink. But then in the um, gym, having a banner advertising like a brewery or something. It feels like somewhat a conflict, like. What's the stance on it? Or I don't know. But, ah.
It's a good point.
So Dan and I are over grabbing a little sidebar, but we both think that's a good point.
So can this policy talks about gifts, but not sponsorships? Right? So are we talking about modifying it to cover both? Or would they be separate policies?
Uh, this one is really written for like, you know, the. And I'm trying to think of a, an, a fundraiser and like a silent auction and someone wants to donate the basket of wine. So and so wants to donate the basket of wine. Now the bottle itself couldn't be on the premises, but they could and then they pick it up. Um.
I feel like with.
Solicit, gifts or donations, uh huh.
Like that to me seems a little bit different than displaying a banner. Alexander's saying it does. I don't know, I'm really torn by that. There's like. We have a lot of support from our local businesses who happen to just be in that industry. And they want to support our students. And I'd like to let them. But it also does send a little bit of a mixed message if we're displaying something. From an alcohol company in, on school premises, right? Um, and we don't want our kids to drink. So I'm not real sure what to do about that piece. I think the gifts piece makes sense. Like if, if we're having an event, either. Fifteen a gift certificate or wine tasting coupon. If that's just what's covered in this policy, that makes sense to me. To think a little bit about the sponsorship.
And that, we don't have sponsorship language in this at this time. We have the thrive people here. So I've been in a lot of gyms. And I, I've specifically looked before because some of the school districts have banners. I don't know if I've ever seen one.
I don't think.
My first. They, if they have this.
I did talk to Superintendent Wade Smith about it. Um, they've struggled just as long as we have struggled. And. A lot of places have ranches. Like they'll use the name and they'll still do it with ranches, you know, that kind of thing. Um, without having the word winery. Estates versus winery. So what I'm hearing so far, we're kind of looking at each other. No one kind of really knows is that in the gifts or donations. We could accept a gift from, from someone and acknowledge their gift if they're from. Like option one that Elisa brought up, gifts from alcohol distributors, right? We could offer it. We could accept a gift. That is a monetary gift. Or a, like a gift of a gift certificate or a gift as a. I, I call them wine baskets. We see them at a lot of fundraisers. But we're not going to exchange that. What I'm hearing is the intent is not to exchange that. For a sign in a gym. Or. A sponsorship, um, Mr. Bailey, I'm thinking of a spot in Vienna, like in a yearbook. Can they buy an ad in the yearbook and, right? So technically that would be in the no, kind of like the gym, right?
I think there's a difference between. Taking a gift basket for a PTO auction that's going to be purchased by an adult. And walking into the high school, um, the junk, you know, the banner saying, you know, anything in here sponsored by, you know, heart alcohol company, maybe. I think that does send the wrong message. So. It is a contradiction in terms, definitely, but I think it's applicable. One is for adults and one is.
And I think it would have to be a very clear definition that we're not having a fundraiser where we have silent auction items that include students and. Parents and we have alcohol items in the auction.
I think we have to talk about it.
I think so too, because I mean, we really have kept a pretty hard line on this for many, many, many years. For, I think for good reason. Alex brought up some really good points. We are actively working to have our students. Not for, you know, take part in those kinds of illegal activities. Um, and I know we have a wonderful industry here in Prosser. Uh, but I'm not sure that the two mix.
Have we talked to some of these industry partners to see how important it is to them that they actually have? A banner that recognizes theirs. Like, are they willing to support our students without us?
So we've never done the, had, I only had the banner like. My first month, I think it was. It was something was, they were selling ads to put the banners out the football field or maybe it was softball. I don't, it was like my first month. And you know, it was a hard line. No, that we don't do that. So that was, that was the only time. But it does come up a lot when someone's organizing a fundraiser like a silent auction. Comes up a lot. Can I put? An empty bottle in the wine basket and keep the alcohol back? And can I give it to, can it be later, even if it's where this? Where the children are, right? And then we know we've held hard and fast no, but you can put that it, what it encumphuses and there's no bottles there. There's no pictures. But if, if we, even somebody who doesn't own the winery wants to donate that to raise the hundred dollars that that basket may bring. Right? So that's where it comes up a lot. And when I say a lot, I mean, comes up. Pretty regularly in meeting or in requests to do things in our district.
Honest, this all started with the marijuana industry when it became. Uh, legalized in the city of Prosser. We had a offer of a donation. Um, from a local business that we, and it was substantial and we rejected it on the premise that it was. Um, the whole idea of it becoming legalized was not beneficial to our students and it wasn't. And it continues not to be. So, um. Those items are for adults.
Yeah. And I think the other thing that everybody needs to understand is we're bringing it up because this policy hasn't been reviewed in a while and it's on our list. This isn't that any one particular establishment or business or myself or Tano or anybody else. We just, we want to make sure under our. Lead that we are, know the, how you. Lead that we're, know how you feel about it and what the policy is, so that it can be. I can't, I don't have to say, well, I don't really know, that's just the way it's always been. I want to be able to talk it through.
So the policy that's in front of us about gifts. Does that need to be changed to speak to alcohol and cannabis then, to cover both of those?
I would say no.
So are there different, is there different policies for each?
Well, we, so I think it was a flat line. No, if I'm not mistaken, right here.
Oh, this right now says yes.
This is adding. Alcohol distributors to the policy.
I, I wonder too if. I mean, it's probably something we just have to take a little more time to think about and talk about, but. Um, we have a lot of, and we have opportunities for industries such as those to donate. To activities that support students that aren't, aren't public school, for instance, like Boys and Girls Club, and support some of those kinds of. So there's opportunity for them to do that kind of support. Um, I, I just think probably just. If we take a little more time and think about it.
And that's once again why I brought it up in a discussion item, not in an action item where it has to be. Approved or not.
Or it'd be just better to kind of table this for the, the next meeting as a discussion item again, as we kind of. Had a few things to discuss and contemplate. And I wouldn't mind seeing that added language just as a separate option. Um, and then we can adjust the policy as need be at that time.
So we'll add this little piece that I read in, and we'll leave it on a discussion item again.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, next up, uh, sale of properties.
So, um, just wanting the public to know, we have, um, received our appraisals on. The three lots across from KRV, the old district office property on. I said that address for solo, like, for Grant. Fifteen hundred Grant, on Grant Avenue, and then the white church that is here out behind us. Um, how this works is we disclose that those properties, um, and we will have a. Public hearing at the first meeting in January, the information will not, not prices or anything like that, but just letting the public know. That those items will eventually be going up for sale, we'll hear from anybody who has pros cons. At the public hearing, and then we will start that resolution process to determine. Prices, realtors, and things like that as it moves forward. So this is just a public announcement to, that those. Public hearing announcements will be in the newspaper, which is our normal means of public information. The last week. December twenty fifth and January first. So, I was looking at her because I couldn't remember if they were publicizing on Christmas Day and New Year's Day, because the paper comes out of Wednesday, and they are, so.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to action items, uh, number one is facility use of the Prosser Family Fitness Zone pool.
I'd make a motion to approve the facility use of the Prosser Family Fitness Zone pool for boys.
All second. Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Cammy Alexander? Good? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Uh, next up is the Ecology Zero Emissions School Bus Grant Award Notification.
Okay, so we won the second, um, amount. For a second bus, and then we won the additional cost to pay for the first bus, so the first bus is now free, one hundred percent for us. The second bus. Will cost us a total of a hundred and nine thousand dollars, which is less than half of a diesel bus if you, we accept that portion of the grant. I figured out, without calculating in any of the electric bus depreciation for the next two school years. Um, I should have a hundred and thirty eight thousand left in depreciation fund. At the end of the twenty five school year, if we were to purchase this. And that doesn't include any of depreciation from the first electric bus, which will start this month when it gets delivered.
And even though the first bus cost us zero dollars, we depreciate the five hundred and forty seven, five hundred and thirty eight dollars. And this bus that would cost us a hundred and nine thousand twenty dollars seventeen cents, we get the five hundred and forty seven thousand five hundred and thirty two dollar depreciation.
Correct, and then on this, the second bus grant, we also got an additional seventy five thousand dollars to upgrade any infrastructure that we need. In the bus lot to hold the chargers, or order more chargers, and we have two currently.
That's just under one point one million dollars in depreciation, that we can spend on anything in transportation, it doesn't have to be an electric.
Correct. It, it has to be any type of vehicle and or major part that's approved by our OSPI rep.
I have a couple questions, um. So when does, when do we take possession of the first bus?
Should be next week.
Next week? And I, I know you probably said this again, but I cannot find my notes from the last time we had this discussion, I, I tore the computer and my notebook apart. Um, do we have any idea on the maintenance and upkeep of those buses, and, and I, what was the longevity? Potential longevity of that bus?
All of it right now, because of it being electric and new, it's all under warranty for all of the work. So it either has to go to Bryson or Cummins to be worked on for all the major things. Um, like our drivers can fix the seats or windows, or, or little insignificant stuff that's not hooked up to the electrical system. Um, the batteries are ten years. The mileage range, so our bus came with, the one that's getting delivered came with the new regenerative braking system that helps build the battery packs back up. So they're expecting the longer we use it, and the more we use it, we should be getting more than a hundred miles per charge in that bus. And the second bus, if we order, would have the same thing on it. So.
Yeah, in tipi- a typical lifespan of a bus is how long again? Is it thirteen years?
If, if they're well taken care of, forever.
Well, in general.
In general, so it's hard to say with Prosser, because we have such an amazing fleet, and none of our buses are older than a, a twenty thirteen. But there's other districts that are still running, like nine, nineties buses. Yeah. So, I mean.
No death.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, our fleet is extremely new compared to most in the valley.
Um, and if, just that it, when we, when we bring. So when we get this bus, the bus that we're replacing is, that's the one we have to destroy, right? We have to put a hole in the block.
Uh, we have to destroy the oldest one.
Okay.
The oldest one we have right now is on Route twenty six, it's a two thousand and ten. So that would go for the second. Of course, it doesn't have any D F, but it's, it's worn out. It is, the seats are all taped up, it's. It's ready. But in the second grant, we can also donate it to, to a different district if we so choose.
Yeah, so we don't have to destroy it.
Correct.
Okay. Um, if we have these two buses, and we pull two buses out of the fleet. Well, how many buses does that leave us for backups, just in case, you know, we have a power outage at night and they don't charge?
So, I'm not removing the buses currently assigned right now to the bus that'll replace, so that it always has a backup bus.
Whether we have one or two, I'll always have.
Correct, they'll always have a backup bus ready to go for them. I don't know where I'll park them yet, but they'll be there.
That was all the questions I had. Thank you.
Do you have a second route in mind that would be ideal for this bus?
Um, I have two, I just, it, I need to talk to the drivers first, but. Uh, to make sure that they want to take on an electric bus. And to make sure that, um, they're ready for the investment that it's gonna take to keep it clean, keep it nice, keep it beautiful, cause they're expensive. And that's an expectation of taking an electric bus. But there are two routes that run about seventeen miles each way, they're full, as well as the bus route I'm putting them on. So it'll be a lot of work for the driver who takes it on.
Two more in addition to the one that you're already gonna put an electric bus on.
Right. There are two routes, so once I talk to the drivers, I'll select one to get in.
On, on the second bus for that grant, when do you have to make a decision on whether or not to move forward with that?
Uh, we need to accept it with ecology as soon as possible, but we have up to two years to order it and pay for it. So it doesn't have to be immediate.
So they had sent this out and awarded us, and they wanted me to sign it, you know how everybody wants you to sign something, and I said, no. I'm not doing that, we're taking it to the board, we filed a protocol in Prosser. And, and SARS is their, is, the individual's name was very respectful of that and so forth. But it's, we don't have like three months to decide, they're expecting to hear from us tomorrow. Uh, on the accepting of the grant or not, not the ordering, but the accepting of the grant.
I guess my initial thought would be, since we haven't yet received the first bus, would. Get it on the road, see how it performed before we went out and signed up for. A second electric bus, I guess is my thought as of now.
You've driven the bus, right? It's in Pasco.
Mm-hmm, I have. We're just waiting on state patrol to inservice it.
If you were to accept the grant. But a year goes by having this bus, and it just turns out to be a disaster for us for some reason. And you decide not to order a second one, what happens?
Yeah, I don't think they'd be very happy with us.
I think the idea is, you know, we've done an application process, we've done whatever, it's like anything. And then we've kept the money or something from another district that. I mean, I don't know, I don't know that there's a financial penalty or something, but I think we'd be at the very bottom of the list if we ever applied for a grant. Right? Because we've taken, we've said, yes, we'll speak for that money, and then we don't. So I don't think there's like a, I mean, I could read the contract again, I don't think there's a financial penalty or anything, but I think there's that level of respect, but.
Do you see any risk involved with us taking the grant and getting the second bus?
I mean, everybody, my drivers, when we, I was talking to them, they're very intrigued by it. And it's been a very good talking point for us, and, and saying, okay, what does this bus have, how does it work? You know, getting them to have better conversations together about our, our fleet, and how are we gonna keep taking care of it? Just the different things, and, oh, where's it gonna park, who's gonna get it, how are we gonna make sure it stays charged in and plugged in, and who's in charge of that? So I think it's been a real team builder for me, having the one and hopefully a second one to come in.
So, and I have been at many superintendent meetings of late, and there's never anything wrong, it's a great place where everybody complains. Poppinish has electric bus, um. All of a sudden I dribble, and it's never come up that they aren't working, or they're not worth the money, or, so I've not heard anything negative in the. The water cooler conversations. Have you? From your directors?
Well, not with our brand, with other, with other vendors, I've heard some stuff, but not with a Bluebird. And one of the things I can say about Bluebird and Bryson is since we're a hundred percent Bluebird fleet, we do get bumped up on the care package side. Where they do help get us back and running right away. Uh, we have one bus down there right now that overheated, and they've already fixed it, and we're gonna go pick it up. So. I think that's a good point that we have with them in our relationship.
That was the diesel bus we were talking about.
A diesel bus, yes, a diesel bus.
You might not know the answer, but if, if the bus were to break down, um, and I don't know enough about it, but how do you tow it?
Flatbed.
You gotta drag it up on top of a flatbed?
Mm-hmm.
Does it roll once it's dead? Like, you just screech it all the way up? Okay, like.
Yeah. So we've already talked to our local tow company, they do have a flatbed, it just.
That will hold it? Really?
Yeah, it just might not be here in ten minutes, it might be here in three hours.
Gotcha.
But it does have a lot of warning signals, a lot of different alerts. So that we will know when to pull it off the road and get it off. But I don't foresee any problems like that, because it's on such a short route. I mean, it's on, it's on a route that literally goes around the block and then comes back into town. Full of kids.
I appreciate that we have two backup buses, just in case.
And then we also have the two diesel buses coming in for trip buses. This summer, which will then put two more buses into our spare fleet, as well as we move the old trip buses onto route buses. And then the older route buses will go to spares, so that will give us four spares unless we choose to surplus some.
So, and all, I know you brought this up, but in, in all honesty, where? Where are you gonna park all this stuff? I mean, I.
The great question.
Conversation with Frank and I.
So, um, in the back corner over on the. Bennett. We can double stack buses that we don't need to get into every day, and so that's where we would double stack our spares that we need. Uh, we're gonna look at bus twenty one that is sitting over in maintenance right now, that insurance paid for, for spare parts. In the summer, we're gonna talk about pulling out the engine and transmission, which is still good. And then surplusing the shell and the frame for somebody who wants to build a motorhome and take it. And then that'll give us room for one more bus over at maintenance to park.
Tommy, do you, um, ever anticipate if we were able to get drivers? Increasing our routes back up because of how full some of our buses are?
I would love to, but I don't want to give myself false joy, even though we do have two drivers in training right now.
I know, I know, I just, I do, I know that we, you know, just shimmy down, you know, slim down and slim down because of necessity.
Mm-hmm.
So having the extra buses, if we could run more routes, they wouldn't necessarily all be extra, we would.
Right, cause we have about four, four to five routes that are at full capacity right now. Every day.
I appreciate all the work that you put into this grant, and I love the idea of us getting an extra million dollars in appreciation that we didn't have to spend any money for. So I'd like to move to approve your Ecology Zero Emissions School Bus Grant Award Notification. All second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Ecology Zero Emissions School Bus Grant Award. Um, Cammy Alexander? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries, thank you again.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to Prosser Heights Elementary and Princess Theater, uh, MOU of Disney's The Lion King Kids.
Well, this is the exact same proposal that we did for Witstran before, this is for. Jody Saban and Heights Elementary. We had our meeting, we've got it laid out, I apologize, I don't have my notes of the dates. But their, uh, the performance would be in March.
Move to approve the Prosser Heights Elementary and Princess Theater MOU for Disney's The Lion King Kids.
Do you have a quick question, sorry? I just thought, um, it's five thousand on the invoice, but on the district responsibilities, it says four thousand. Wasn't sure what that discrepancy was.
I'm gonna be honest, I don't know. Delise, can you look up the last check we wrote to Princess Theater? I think it is four thousand. And I, I just don't remember, I'm just gonna, I can pull up the, when we approved it last time, real quick while you're there. I, I'm almost ninety percent certain that it's four thousand dollars out of pocket for it. That is correct. In October, so I, I don't know the difference between the two, but I know that we wrote the check for four thousand.
Okay, and then I was also confused reading it. Um. Trying to find exactly where the language was, but it almost made it sound like the performance was going to be at Heights and not at the theater, and I don't.
That is not accurate. That is not accurate. Practices are at Heights and there is a field trip at the beginning where they go and see the theater. Then they practice at Heights and then they do dress rehearsal at the theater and they perform at the theater.
I think under, it says performances, the six dates are as follows and then it says Prosser Heights Elementary and it lists the dates and titles.
Because it's that school's. Performing on those dates, not at. Think if we looked back at the other contractor, probably said Witstrand Elementary right there.
The invoice also says five thousand. So do we need to get some clarification?
Yeah, I would think we do because we've, we've paid four thousand.
So the fee is five thousand, but the district pays for contract. Yeah, I could see that.
If that's great, if that's the case, that's great, but I think to me. If it's four thousand one place and five thousand twenty, I don't think we need to have it. I'm very excited for the line.
Me too.
Just wanna know the right amount.
No, we have not issued, we haven't issued it. I'm going to text Christopher right now. I don't know that we can solve it this evening, but.
Are they gonna start before next week?
No, it's after the first of the year. But it's before our export meeting. They start practice before our next quarter. Like Monday, the sixth, they start.
Oh, we meet next week.
Oh, yeah, we could, I'm sorry, I'm.
They start on the sixth of January.
Yeah, so we could take table it till next week and get it fixed.
I'll withdraw my.
So then I'll move to the rest to the next quarter, the eighteenth.
We have a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hey, next up is out of state travel for CADCA to Washington DC.
Um, hi, my name is Naili. Um, some of you may not know me. Um, but I am new to, um, Prosser Thrive Coalition. I started in August. And, um, I'm here with Lupa Maldonado. She is representing, um, the migrant program as a graduation specialist. And, um, we are wanting, um, to see if we can get approval for three students to go to CADCA. Um, just a little bit about, um, Mustang Thrive, um, Mustang Thrive is an extension of, of Prosser Thrive Coalition. And what we do, um, we aim in prevention efforts and to help students, um, have a healthy lifestyle. And that includes providing education, resources and anything, um, that has to do with alcohol prevention, uh, substance misuse. And mental health as well. Um, CADCA is very important because it's gonna, um, provide students the opportunity to network with. Um, prevention specialists, uh, other professionals. And they're even gonna have the opportunity to speak with senators and local representatives. Um, to voice out their concerns and issues, um, that are happening here in our community. And, um, ways that they can potentially fund us in the future. Um, just a little bit about dates, um. This is gonna be a four-day training that's gonna happen, uh, February third through February sixth. And, um, we are planning on leaving, uh, February second and coming back February seventh. So it is gonna be a whole week that students are gonna be missing from school. Um, at the moment, um, we already have the three students in mind and there is conversations, um, with teachers to make sure that everything is good to go. Um, students will be staying, um, at all times with, um, us, Lupa Maldonado and I. As the, uh, school board representative and as a representative from Prosser Thrive. Um, and we will be staying at the Gaylord National Resort and Convention Center in Maryland. Um, but we do plan on having some sightseeing activities for students, um, in the DC area where they can look at monuments. Um, museums and take a look at anything that, um, may, um, provide them an opportunity to see something that they don't see here. Um, all of this will be covered by the coalition. That includes flights, hotel registration, meals. Um, we will provide the students with, um, kind of like a gift card voucher that is loaded with, um, the per diem rates for their meals. Um, so students will have, um, the opportunity to be a little bit independent when it comes to their meals and they'll be able to calculate. Um, the cost of how much, um, their meals cost and, um. If there's anything like souvenirs or anything that they would wanna buy that would come out of their pocket as well. Is there any questions for me?
It, it would be an amazing opportunity for kids. Um, not only do they get to participate in a ton of workshops. To, um, learn self-advocacy, um, leadership skills. They, they learn a lot. Um, and you know, they also get to see their nations happen. So, um, it would be an amazing opportunity for them.
And I forgot to mention, um, that they are gonna be participating in Capitol Hill Day. Um, so that's when they're gonna provide a speech, um, to the representatives and to the senate. Um, just kind of advocating for what they, um, believe and there's topics of alcohol. Um, other drug-related issues, marijuana, mental health. Um, so these are issues, um, that we see in our schools and our community and for these students to take that on, it's. Amazing, um, opportunity for them and even for me that I'm starting now, I'm like, it's an honor and a great opportunity.
Um, the only question I would have is when you guys, you know, if, if we all approve it, of course, but. Typically, they've come, the kids have come back and given like a brief. I don't know, talk on what they learned, what they brought back, what they can bring back into the school, so, um, looking forward to that.
How cool, um, I mean, I really appreciate that Thrive Coalition is funding that. Really great opportunity for these students.
I move to approve out of state travel for CADCA to Washington DC.
Sorry.
Been moved and seconded. Cami, Alexander, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign, motion carries. Thank you and have fun. Moving on to number five, resolution eleven twenty-four, ca- cancellation of municipal warrants.
Um, okay, so we bank through Benton County. And they track all of our warrants for us and once a year they send us a report with stale dated warrants. That have not been cashed in a year or greater. And so we send letters out to every vendor and every employee, letting them know that they have this warrant and they have. So many days to come and request a new one and then if not, we void them. So this resolution is just giving the county permission to void all of our still data warrants over a year old.
And does it go as unclaimed property to Department of Revenue?
Correct.
Is it checking here for?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot.
Make the motion to. Approve resolution eleven twenty-four cancellation.
I'll second that. Um, I do have one question, um. So we, they can cancel the check, but at, at some point can they come requested?
Yeah.
At any time?
Yep, and then we have to reissue it. But it's, it's voided in the system also, so we'll be able to see that it's voided and why.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Um, it's been moved and seconded to approve a le- resolution eleven twenty-four. Cancellation of municipal warrants. This is a roll call vote. Michelle?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
I two will vote aye, motion carries. Uh, next up is final study and survey, resolution twelve twenty-four.
So we've been talking about the study and survey for a long time. It's a very large document. Um, I, Ed Champagne is not on this evening. Something has come up. He notified us late. Happy to welcome any questions. Um, I think it's very thorough. Um, I, I don't know where to, to say beset that. I mean, unless you have a specific question. I don't know, I think it's ninety-six pages or something, so it's, it's a lot.
And just to clarify, this document's required as part, part of what we submit to OSPI to get. Funding for additional buildings in the future, correct?
That is one hundred percent correct. It is a step towards. Whenever that process is, but would be this first step in moving towards. Well, halt, or applying for SCAP funding and the work that we do to replace house or modernize.
Any questions on the report? I move to approve, uh, resolution, uh, twelve twenty-four, the final study and survey. It's been moved and seconded, uh, it's a roll call vote. Michelle?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
I two will vote aye, motion carries. Uh, moving on to the highly capable program plan approval.
So I'll, I'm gonna tell you in advance, I'm sorry for the way it looks. This is the gift of OSPI's form. Um, every year we must approve our highly capable program plan. We get actually very little funding for highly capable, about seventy-four thousand dollars. Um, which doesn't even cover, come close to covering our teacher salaries. But that is how it has always been. It actually used to be like half of that about five years ago. So we actually get a little bit more. Um, the first part of this is just assurances. We are required to provide universal screening two times during a student's career. So we did initially do, um, the CAGAT screener with first graders. We've, it's a computer test. We threw kind of trial and error and seeing how our students do, we've trying to determine that first grades may be a little too early. So we've moved that to second grade. So in the spring, we'll be doing our second grade screener. Where all the students take the CAGAT screener and then if they score at a certain level, they would take the full CAGAT test. Um, we also do acad- an academic assessment screening in fifth grade. Where we, um, don't go in and retest all the kids. We look at test scores. Our students, um, showing a really. Maybe haven't been referred and have high test scores. Could be students that are, uh, English language students. And they have really shown marked growth on the WEDA assessment. So there's very, we look at various assessments to try to find kids that might have been missed. Um, also maybe in IEPs, discussions with, uh, for those kids that might be twice gifted, who might qualify for special education. And gifted at the same time and we've had students, um, in that situation before. Uh, same thing in looking at a five oh four plans. Um, I, and it is, it, we're really working hard not to miss students because in a referral-only system. There are certain students that are gonna get noticed and some that just aren't. And sometimes it's those kids that are not your super cooperative, super happy compliant classroom students. That have a lot of really strong academic gifts, but, um, don't really love, maybe don't love school the way it is. So, uh, that's part of the goal. Uh, the, most of the forms are just saying what assessments we use. So we review our state assessments, SBA, R I ready scores. Our WEDA assessment, which is the language assessment for students who qualify for bilingual. Um, what grade levels we do that in and then what I, the test that we use, which we use the, um, the CAGAT test. It's a standardized, uh, test of giftedness. Test three areas, math, reading. And basically spatial, spatial awareness. Um, we, our program has now expanded. We now offer gifted services. That are not just classroom-based. In K two, we have a K five program that Christine Means is teaching, um. For all of our elementary students. And then we continue to have our courses at the middle school with Mr. Smith or Open Door. And then when students get into high school, it's course acceleration. The options are course acceleration, like, uh, um, advanced math. Moving through and taking classes prior, prior to the kind of norm year, you might take them. Um, honors, get, honors courses, college and the high school courses, running start. Um, those things all qualify to continue to support gifted students. Um, I think that's all.
Questions for Hannah? Hold second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the highly capable program plan. Cami? Alexander, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving on to vouchers and payroll. Any questions for Delise? Move to approve vouchers and payroll. Been moved and seconded. Cami, Alexander, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Uh, item nine's, uh, second final reading of policy and procedure sixty-eight ninety-five pesticide notification, posting and record keeping.
Sorry.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded to approve the second final reading of policy and procedure sixty-eight ninety-five. Cami, Alexander, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Moving on to the second final reading of, of policy fifty-two twenty-two, job sharing staff members.
Move to approve the second and final reading of policy fifty-two twenty-two, job sharing staff members.
Sorry.
Been moved and seconded to approve second final reading of policy fifty-two twenty-two. Cami? Alexander, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. That concludes our action items for tonight. Moving on to consent items.
Move to approve consent items one through four.
Hold second. Been moved and seconded to approve the consent items one through four. Cami? Alexander, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. That concludes the business for tonight. Moving on to reports. Uh, Delise, you're up first.
Nothing for me tonight.
C C Dina, you're up second.
That was fast. Um, I just wanted to let you know, uh, Kim and I are working on collaborating with Patterson. Joe West is superintendent there. Some, as we have students that transition into our high school. I think next year he said we'll have sixteen new freshmen coming from Patterson. Uh, we talked, we spent some time talking about transfer credits. We often get transfer credits for math, algebra, geometry, coming from other districts. Um, sometimes world language, especially if they've done a stamp test. Or maybe possibly, or offered a world language in middle school. Um, Patterson was sending, was sending a, a transfer course for world geography, which we hadn't, um, had before. So we're working through that and as well as trying to, you know, plan maybe long range to make sure students, um. As we work together as partners, we have, they're, they are our students, they're gonna come to us. That we're, that we are, uh, good, good partners in communicating there. Um, we received today over six hundred sets of hats and gloves from HMIS. After Mission Integrated Solutions, um, they brought, it was, and then I was of what pleasant.
They brought, it was, and then I was of one pleasant surprise, delivered by one of my former students, who I had probably in my first year or two of teaching, but I totally remember her. I don't know if she remembered me, but oh, well, I guess I was felt blessed that I remembered because I don't always. So that was really exciting. Those, tomorrow, the principals will be taking those after add team. And there's, there's hats and gloves for all of, like, a lot of times you get stuff for elementary, you're like, not as much secondary, but there's for all the schools. There are some for all the schools, so they can have those on hand for kids and families. It's been really cold this winter already. So I can't guarantee everything's going to fit perfectly, but there's a lot to choose from. They sucked a lot of hats and gloves in these little vacuum bags. I went yesterday, or not yesterday, two days ago to the KRV music program. I always enjoy those programs because there's just some kids that are so, such performers. It's really fun to watch. Sue's group did a great job. It was, it was fun. It was a fun, a really fun program. They did it at the high school. I think that was about the max they're going to be able to fit in that auditorium. Everybody comes to elementary music. So we talked about the kinder program, kinder classes are, is a bigger class. So maybe that can't be done there. It might be a little too tight. We had a discipline training. I think Kim's going to talk about that, that talked, talked about the new discipline laws. It was really, really helpful. I, I told the trainer, I was really dreading it. I didn't really want to come, but I needed to. So I went and it was great. It was super helpful, probably one of the best discipline trainings I've ever been to. We are, there is a law that, starting next year, we're required to have EpiPins available to, readily available in a, in a, in our office area, in a visible area, if there was a anaphylactic situation. So we're working through that. Our nurses are having a hard time actually acquiring the EpiPins. They have the standing order, but getting them has been a challenge. And then we will have boxes, kind of like an AED box, that the EpiPins go into. Both, you have to have both the child dose and the adult dose available, so that if someone who has an, an emergency, an anaphylactic emergency, you would have those ready, readily available. If, if a person knows that they have that and something were happening, anybody could administer the dose. If we have an unknown, which we had a relatively recently, an unknown, you know, all of a sudden you, you tried Kiwi for the first time and you're suddenly allergic. That can only be administered by a nurse, but we had some spirited discussion at safety tonight about whether a person could self-administer if they were, because I wouldn't be able to. We also had some discussion about if someone is really dying and having an anaphylactic emergency, would you really not administer the dose? But that's the law. So it'll be, so now we have AED, Narcan, and we will have auto injectors for EpiPins. And that's all for me.
Questions for Deanna?
I'm going to add on to that discussion. I think it was a really good discussion about the EpiPins, because what it brought up was, do we have AEDs in the right places? Do we have the Narcan in the right places? Do we have the stuff easily accessible, right? So, and then do we have the little audible alarms on the boxes and things like that? So it was a really good discussion. Brian was, was there and that was. Oh, I'm up next. So you've got my report in front of me. I don't know. So the little dot, second dot down was the KRV music program. I don't know what happened to my typing that was there. But I did meet with the Princess Theater, obviously it was on the topic today, about the Heights Elementary performance and moving really forward. It's really good for our community. And I think I was, it was really interesting sitting with them. They're getting more excited as the programs are going on and the, and the student work. So that was good. The Pulse of Prosser, last time I brought up, we will be going to twice a month, beginning in twenty twenty-five. Celine and I are going to work out a calendar to make sure we get it out twice a month, that kind of thing. We still have one legal issue that we're working through. It's not overly major, but it is an HR issue that we're working through. Update, hum, so I hate to say this, but the smells keep causing us problems. So it came up tonight that there's a smell at Witstrand in one of the, one of the maintenance rooms. So we don't know if it's a dry drain or something. So we'll be working through that. The smell is still continuing at KRV. Interesting enough, when we were walking and talking about paint at Heights, which is getting redone at Christmas, Ed Champagne was there, walking physically onsite. We had a whole bunch of brains together again. And so they brought it up again and we put, and Ed now is going to go back to mechanical. And they're going to spend some time looking at that before we actually cut big holes into that side of the area where we think it is. We still may have to do it, but maybe there's somebody in mechanical that has a better idea. I don't, you really need to go look at Housel. You might want to wait till it's completely done, but it's like, it's a whole different entryway in school. It just really brought it up. It's kind of when you do anything. And another great news, the chiller is part of our capital levy money at Housel. So we started with mechanical about a month or so ago, like, what do we need to do? There's in big things like there, there's called Lichen Kind. So one of the struggles is if you go to Lichen Kind and technology is advanced, what of the rest of your infrastructure system can handle something? Because it's still modern, even though, you know, it's the same output and so forth. And believe it or not, it might be on the lucky side of according to this time, there is a unit that has not, it's like somebody spoke for it and then didn't take it. And there is a unit that's exactly what we need, sitting at warehouse X, and I don't know where that's at. And they really want to get rid of it. So the price is very intriguing. And so we have the specs went from that company to mechanical engineer. And it's potential that we could put that chiller in in February and have everything done before we ever hit springtime. So it was really exciting. And when I say it's a good price, I mean, there's still hundreds of thousands of dollars, but, I mean, it's a good deal for us so that we can move forward. Update here, if you've been in the, I don't know what you guys called it, the main student hallway that students came in. The other hallway has been painted. And then when we come back in January, this hallway will have been painted and will have carpet on and things. We are going to work on the door entry over here, but things are still moving on. Yeah, but it wouldn't stay open far enough that it latched. Oh, it stayed open? Oh, because we had to, no, but we worked on it last time. I don't know who was out there with me. It was, we used Celine. Oh, yeah, because we had another meeting. Good. And the old technology op, and Deanna's old office is gone? It's gone. The triple white is gone. So we, so that was really a positive piece to, to move that forward and be able to prepare that. With our WASA conference, I'm sure you guys will talk about it, but it was a, it was a great opportunity, I think, for all of us that attended. The discipline training, Deanna's right. I even prepped the president or his name. I said, so just so you know, I'm really kind of busy today and I might not be able to stay all day. That was like, I don't know if this is going to be, I sat, leaned in the whole time, like, it went fast, huh? We were there for three hours and it was, it was interesting and we learned so much. Maybe your check-ins with the principals and the directors, we're going to have all those done. And Eric and I attended our Schwinn meeting today. This was, this particular one was holding grand because we didn't have to drive very far. It was also very good superintendent learning, being with your peers and hearing about what's going on. So that's my report.
Any questions for Kim?
Kim.
Thank you. Next up is board reports. Michelle?
Michelle, can I interrupt? On your, in your spots today are your legislative handbooks. And that's from our WASA. Michelle will probably talk about it, but these, we ended up getting them and producing them for each of you to have the information. And STRAD is strategic advocacy development, I think, is what STRAD stands for.
Thank you.
Just going to ask you about this little gift on my table. Yeah, the annual conference obviously was the big thing since the last time we met. I thought it was excellent. The keynote especially was just amazing. I wish I had it videoed because I keep trying to tell people about it and I just do not do it justice like the speaker. But it was all about perspective, just reminding us that we all have unique perspectives we bring to the table and just curious about the perspectives of others as we lead this school district. I went to a couple of really great sessions. One was about celebrating student achievement and I took some notes about a really great practice they have in Natchez that I think would be awesome for us to implement here at Prosser. So hopefully we can continue to talk about that, maybe as a discussion item or just sidebars. Also, a good session on how to be effective in creating lasting change. So just some really good tips for any board member who's trying to change anything in the district. And then finally, the last session I went to, I was the most interested in. They were talking about creating career connected learning opportunities for post-secondary STEM success. And this really hit home to me because I have actually been talking to a contact at the STEM Foundation. And Brian and Rick and Deanna, you'll be hearing from me on Friday. I'm hoping to meet with all of you and kind of make some links with this gal from the STEM Foundation I've been talking with. But we're just thinking about ways that we can really create, maybe like a school within a school at our high school, kind of a STEM academy, creating some career connected learning pathways, basically just giving our students a path from ninth grade that will lead them directly into careers. And I know we have a lot of those pieces in place already. And so really just kind of putting some heat around that, something I'm really passionate about. And there was a whole session at, at the WASA conference about how to do that too. So I took lots of great notes there. Also, let's see, beyond that, oh, Alexander, the other thing, that nutrition program. So the guy did email Brian and I about that and mentioned that Granger has used their program. And so I'm hoping we can take a little field trip. Come and Darlene, and we can go check out what they're doing in Granger and see if that would work for our district. Because the food was pretty good, what I tried. And then finally, Dean Smith is looking for NHD judges. So if anybody able to do that, I don't know. My kids are both doing NHD this year. So I'm like, maybe that rules me out for being able to help. But I think he said he's looking for sixty judges and we're hosting this year, so. I can judge other people's children. Yeah. So anyway, if you have an interest in helping, I know that he needs a lot of judges to sign up for that.
Yeah, on the WASA side, sessions I hit, there was a school and community safety meeting that was really good. I did get some notes sent out, so hopefully that'll lead to some more discussion items down the road. Just kind of bringing that back to Prosser and seeing if there's ways to improve there. Interesting, one also was Peninsula High School with their cell phone ban, which, you know, Alex was in, in that one as well. So I think that will bring up some, some good talking points next time that conversation comes up as well. Just kind of interesting how they, they went about it. Seemed like it was very, very well received, I think, for the most part, but we'll, we'll get back to that at some point in time. But I thought that one was very good. Parliamentary procedure, set it on that one with Kim as well. That one seemed to get in the weeds pretty, pretty quick, but I think our, our takeaway was that the, the way we're doing things for meetings, we should be on par with what we're supposed to be doing. So that was kind of my takeaway out of that one. And then got to participate in the Prosser Rotary Turkey Trot on Thanksgiving morning. That was the first time I'd done that. So it was cool. Seemed like a very good turnout. My old comment is I think you're, I think your track's a little longer than the five K, but I don't, that's what according to my.
Five K plus, five K plus now.
Thank you.
That's for the extra mashed potatoes.
That was fun.
I'll, I'll follow up. I start with the turkey trot. Dr. Ryman came and he almost won, but we had really sad Prosser High School cross-country students that took the top positions. And I want to comment on these Prosser High School cross-country students that stayed and cheered on the very low key. We don't have a balloon arch. There's no music playing, but they stayed and clapped and cheered for everybody. Just really demonstrated outstanding sportsmanship and volunteerism. It's just a great thing to see them do and be a part of. Which made everybody coming out and did good donations that came in, delivered to Jubilee Ministries. And, you know, so much going on, band concert tomorrow night, middle school, high school, and other Prosser students in Elk for the next three weekends, that all kids from two years old to eighteen years old. Last weekend, the auditorium for six shows, the Nutcracker and Jingle All the Way, a million sports going on and just lots of great things going on.
Thank you. I don't have anything particular. I'd like, I would like to put on our radar as a board and as a team. I think it'd be appropriate to do like a mid-year or half-year like assessment on how well, Michael did a great job kind of talking about I-ready or other metrics that we can look at to see the progress of our kids, not just through assessment. Be nice to have like a half-year, mid-year type thing.
So we can, we can do that. I would say let's do it. We would do it after January when we've done our I-ready assessment. So it'll probably be in February. But we did just today receive our CEE, our parent, staff, board survey results. Those just came in today. The principals will get to see them tomorrow for their buildings. But we could, that's something we also could bring and share. It just, there's a lot to it. So it does take us a little time to weed through it because there's the district perspective and then all the buildings. It's a lot. So kind of figuring out what's the best representation. We can share all with you, but it's not even that simple to share, honestly, right now, because I had to download, I don't know, twenty-seven documents just to get them for the principal. So anyway, so we can, we'll be able to share that too. And maybe we'll do that in January and then do the, we can do assessment in February.
Additionally, you know, we, I think the, the district and, you know, each school's done a lot of work with PLCs. And it would be nice to kind of get a, like a mid-year perspective on how those PLCs have worked, how they have functioned and, you know, in a school as kind of a brief, you know, update to the board and into the, the community. If that's possible, maybe in that February timeframe-ish. And lastly, you know, as we, we get ready to finish our tennis courts, I think by spring, I, I believe it's important that we start talking about facility naming committees, getting that developed. I think we've got two great projects to name, one being the track and two being the tennis courts. I think it would be good to, to kind of have that committee and, and get, get that moving for itself. The football field? Yeah, that's fine. I think it's, I think it's important to name, especially some of the new ones and so forth. So with that, that's all I have. Next, so we'll have a special board meeting next week, December eighteenth, because our regular scheduled meeting for the twenty-fifth, right, is, we've moved that to the next week. Nobody wants to be here on Christmas at six PM right here. Meeting adjourned.